2019. Lisa, would you call, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Riordan?
Here.
Mr. Furadamanda?
Here.
Mr. Pointon?
Here.
Yeah, I'd like to say everyone that rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the land development sketch plan for the Haverford High School.
Hi.
Good evening.
So we're here, we're back again. We were here for Linwood Elementary, they've retained.
For your record, identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry?
Would you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, Tom Hanna with Gilmore and Associates.
Ryan Orr, KCBA Architects.
Thank you.
So there's several other folks here with us in the, in the audience, superintendent and several board members, and Ken Matthews from the CB Development, the owner's rep is also here. So as I said, we're back again from, from our time here with Linwood to talk about the high school. The school district has a proposal to construct two additions to the existing high school and do some parking modifications and additional parking as well in the back. Ryan can talk a little bit about the building, but in general, it's two, it's two additions. There's a three-story addition here, and a single-story addition, classroom addition, and a single-story addition over in the existing parking totaling about 28,600 square feet. Do you want to say anything about the additions?
No, so yeah, as, as Tom mentioned, there's a three-story classroom addition which will hold 15 classrooms, and then the other single-story addition will house band and orchestra rooms with the existing rooms being renovated for other uses.
The other modifications on the site are essentially parking modifications. With the three-story classroom addition, we're not taking up any existing parking, but with the single-story addition, there'll be some existing parking spaces that are removed. So we're proposing a combination of restriping and additional parking out behind the gymnasium and also out towards the track and field. We did get some, some comments from, from the chairman. I know you have looked at it and we've, we've seen some of the markups that you had on your plan. We're certainly willing to take those into consideration. I think there are a lot of good ideas in that, in, in your discussions with, with Doc Martin from the, from the school board. So, you know, as we move forward, we'll, we'll certainly take those, those under advisement as well.
Just for the planning conditions, I did have a short, brief meeting with Dr. Martin from the school board. And, and I gave Dr. Martin some ideas on how they could possibly modify the proposed parking and possibly not encroach to that one field as far as the new parking was being proposed.
Sure. So if we step back, there's, just put another plan up here. This is included in your package. Chairman should be familiar with this plan. From your days at Chester Valley Engineering. This was, was really the last major renovation to the building in the mid-'90s. This plan received a couple variances for impervious coverage and some buffer requirements along the neighboring properties. At that time, the impervious coverage, the, the limit was 40%, but the impervious coverage was raised up to just under 43%, 42.9%. And so we're working off of this plan really as a basis as we're moving forward right now. And as we get further into design and, and our zoning application, we'll have to go out and confirm site, site conditions with our own survey, update the survey and whatnot. But we were able to use this plan as a basis for what we're showing you now in terms of the sketch plan. So from a zoning standpoint, we will need relief on two, at this time, from what we've identified as two, two components of the zoning. Again, impervious coverage, which would go up to just under 48% for the plan we have now, and that could fluctuate a little bit if we, if we look at modifying the parking design. And also for, for building coverage. Building coverage maximum is 20%. As we show this now, it's, it's up over 21, 21.1%. So we'd be seeking variances for both of those sections of the zoning ordinance. Any other thing I was going to say in terms of staging? It's, it's the district's intent to build the, the three-story classroom building first in, do you want to talk about this? Actually, Brian has a little bit better information on the dates of the zone, of the staging.
Yeah, so that, that portion phasing would be beginning in December 2020, built through 2021, and then the intent is for the other portion of the building phase to begin in 2021 through 2022, including the parking.
Okay.
So, so with that, that's essentially our, our presentation for the sketch that's in front of us. I know Mr. Faulkner had, had put together a letter on some thoughts he had on, on the sketch plan, which are all comments that, that we would, we would address through the course of land development application as well.
Okay. Rob, any questions, comments?
The only comment that I have is, just curious, this section of the plan, is that the three-story, two-story or three-story addition?
This is three, three-story here, the single-story. Out by Leadham Avenue.
So the, the building currently is three stories, three stories of classrooms back here, and then single-story music and orchestra rooms with the gymnasium directly adjacent.
My thought was, and I know it's going much further down the line, and that is, that seems to be a major entrance into the site, into the back area. We're in construction, I guess there'd be some thoughts about how people are still going to get back there to utilize that play area.
Yes.
Ken Matthews, CB Development, owner's rep. So we still haven't gone through the details of the phasing yet.
I know I'm early bringing that up, but that was my first.
Sure, so there's going to be a lot of discussion on, you know, where do we stage everyone to keep them out of the way, the ballparks, and so all of that can stay active, let alone keeping the traffic continuous through. So we'll be able to work through a lot of that and try and isolate the construction as much as possible. A lot of it, you know, we may phase to happen over the summer as well to try and limit the interruption to the school. So we really do need to dig into those details, but that's a, you know, a great comment.
And the three, three addition of how many classrooms?
15 classrooms, five per floor, with a stair tower at the end of each, at the, at the end of the wing, and then three essentially would be larger labs at the very end of the wing.
But to your point, the great part with this first phase is we can construct it without taking up any parking areas for laydown or any of that, because we're around the backside. Certainly, the second addition is right in the middle of the existing parking lot, so we have to work out some details there over that second year.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess to piggyback on that, is the, are we also looking towards any future development beyond that? Like, I assume it's a single-loaded corridor with five classrooms on one side. Is it being envisioned that you could add again, or?
Currently, no. Currently, we're, we're close to the building, and with that addition, we're creating a courtyard there. And in order to maintain the natural light to the other. Sure, in order to maintain the natural light into the other classrooms there as long as, and as well as a lower cafeteria level, we have to maintain that courtyard.
I guess I was thinking to the other side, to the, to the field side?
Right, so currently, we're lining up with the existing corridor.
Okay.
Which is dictating that the corridor is actually to the south of that addition.
Okay. And then the one-story addition, is that, is there any overbuild possibility later, or? I'm not 100% clear on the massing of the, the school. My kids aren't in high school yet, but.
Currently, those spaces, so the, the new band room and orchestra room would be sized to house the additional students that are coming for the other classroom addition. So yes, those are being upscaled, and then as well as interior renovations in the building, those spaces are then able to be upscaled as well.
But the intent's not at the moment for, for additional build that was based on demographic survey that the school district had done.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was one, one of the questions in here, too, was about 40 additional spots, 20 employees, but unclear about increase in student population. Did you guys touch on that at all?
Do you want to speak at all to the demographic increase, the study that was done?
Hi, I'm Maureen Rucci, I'm superintendent in the school district. We did conduct a demographic study, which, so we now have 10 years of data, looking at, starting out with actually live birth data from the county, and then apportioning what percentage of that live birth data historically have we seen appear into our schools. And with respect to the high school, it's not as much a projection as the reality, because the, these children are already in our schools. So we've got big bubble numbers coming up through all five of our elementary schools. We know that our high school is going to peak at 2,300 students. When we conducted the study, we were at just about 18. We already have 1,905 students registered for September of 2019. So this is all being built to accommodate those students moving through our system. We're not expecting 400 students all at once. We actually took in 80 more last year, and we're projected to take in another 90 this year, so it's going to be broken up over time.
Yeah, my kids have been part of that bubble as it's gone up from three classes to four classes in the, in the elementary schools, yeah. Great, thank you very much.
It's, it's a good problem, Jeff.
Yeah, absolutely.
You said this is, your maximum enrollment would be 2,400?
2,300.
2,300.
Yes, and students don't park in that area.
So that's 400 more than you currently have?
400 more than we currently have when we did the study, but we already have, we're up to 19 in September.
And you're saying this, these additions would accommodate that additional?
Yes.
Okay. And do your core facilities, I mean, do you have to make modifications to your cafeteria, library, your auditorium in order to accommodate this additional student?
Our, our auditorium already seats 900 students, and we don't have anything for the entire population, because for years, you've not been able to, you know, to do, to house your entire student body in there. So they already have accommodations for how they get, you know, when they want to have full student assembly types of things, how they can schedule those. The cafeteria, we have, I don't know if you're familiar with the interior of the building, there's an area where they call the East and West Commons, and we're now moving up into that area with table seating for, you know, for students there. The expansion to the band, chorus, and fitness area is largely due to the fact that we already know historically 47% of our children in this township participate in either band music or, you know, some music or type of chorus. So we know that with those incoming students, to expect how many of them are going to need to be in that particular area.
And does the school district have a policy in regards to students driving to school and parking on campus?
We do not have a policy, you know, for a formalized, board-approved policy, but there isn't parking because the staff utilize the parking and are arriving there before students.
So it's first come, first served?
Mm-hmm.
If I were a student, I wanted to park on campus if I got there.
If you showed up at 6:15 or so, yeah.
Okay, so there's no, some, some school district?
Yes, I. Yeah.
Out of curiosity, what are some of the other renovations that you're making in the existing school?
So essentially, it is in that, in those two areas, one to, in order to tie in both additions, but additionally, in the music addition area, as Dr. Rucci mentioned, we're going to be rebuilding a chorus room and creating a lifetime fitness room. So when we did the study with the district on what types of spaces needed to be added, one of those spaces was, you know, every, all of those kids are now going to be taking gym, but instead of building another gym, we're going to build a lifetime fitness space because fitness education is changing. So we did look at those spaces along with the district in order to figure out what other renovations needed to, to happen within the school.
The, it looks like the three-story addition connects to the existing school?
Correct.
And like, just, I guess, where the stairwell is, or?
Right, so currently, as shown, there's a stairwell, and then to the left of that portion, there's a cutout, which is actually where the generator currently sits. So we would actually be creating a corridor through an existing classroom, but the other half of that classroom can become a small group instruction room, and then that allows us to continue the corridor through to the addition.
So the floor levels on your proposed addition are going to match the floor levels?
Correct.
Existing building?
Correct.
Understand that question.
Fair question. Yes.
Okay, Jay, I got some questions for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to stick my nose in. It's more of a demographic question. Is Haverford Township experiencing the same kind of rise in student bodies as other communities around us are? Do, do we have that information, at least for Delaware County? I mean, are you seeing the same thing happening?
There are other school districts in the county that are seeing an increase in enrollment. What is of interest to us is, we don't have buildings, you know, that are, that are being constructed in the township. So ours enrollment is either coming from families who are leaving out, you know, older than us, or we are also, believe that we're garnering more of the population that may contribute.
I would have thought that that might become an effect when I've seen what some of the schools are charging now for tuition on an annual basis of close to $50,000. It would make sense that it becomes a difficult situation for people to choose a different form of education for their kids if they. Gotcha, thank you. No, I'm really fascinated. This is fascinating, and, and, and I'm glad to see you're on top of it ahead of the game. That's amazing, because that means that you're not. I lived in Albuquerque, New Mexico for nine years, and my children never went to school except in a double-wide trailer, because they didn't have the schools in place. So whatever you do, if you can get them in place, and that's only kindergarten, okay, they actually had to leave a building and go to a double-wide bathroom facility. So what you're doing is, is critical for the township.
Don't give them any ideas, Joe.
Agreed, this will help, I mean, this is, my kids are coming into this, it's great, this, this is good.
Thank you, sorry, I digress.
Okay, a couple things. The, the, your sketch plan depicts parking in the front of school, which really doesn't exist that way. And also along the Leadham Avenue side, those spaces were changed to 60-degree angle parking, shown 45. So I guess the bottom line is, from the prior approval in 1996, the school district's on the hook for 211 existing parking spaces. So when you do your final count and design, if you're short of that number, you're going to have to make whatever that shortage is, you're going to have to make that up. Okay, so our, our starting point is 211, plus the additional spaces you need for the addition.
Understood.
The other thing I noticed is, in the back parking lot, you're putting in a new driveway connection between the rear parking lot and the driveway along Leadham, okay? And there's a two-and-a-half-foot elevation difference within like 11 feet. So that's going to be a difficult transition for you to make without adjusting something. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then finally, the loading dock area kind of creates a bathtub, if you will, from a stormwater standpoint, okay? And, and it only got exasperated when the building was built a foot lower than it was supposed to have been built. So you're going to have to, what you're thinking, Cap, when it comes to figuring out how to get that water out of there, and I would suggest you have some type of overland redundancy available in case that inlet in that loading dock gets clogged for some reason, there's a, a lead point for that drainage to get around that addition and out to Mill Road.
And we, we understand, I know a while ago that, that it was a poor condition, but I know at least of late, especially with some of the storms in the last five or six years, that they haven't had any flooding issues there.
Back when they were doing the addition, we had a very cold winter, and those fields were all basically ice skating rinks, it was so cold. And then one day, it just rained like four inches, and that water had basically nowhere to go.
Nowhere to go.
It was a little bit of a mess back then, but as long as you're aware of it, that's, that's fine.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions? Anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question? All right, seeing none, thank you for bringing the plan for it, and we look forward to seeing your next plan. Oh, one other thing. Again, back in '95, the school district went to the zoning board and got variance relief for impervious coverage and building coverage at percentages higher than actually exist. The reason for that was, the initial plan for the addition back in '95, when those plans went out the bid, the prices came in like 33% over budget, so we had to tailor back the project, make some of the additions smaller, reduce the amount of parking. So we actually didn't use all the impervious and building coverage that we had asked for originally. I don't know if those numbers still hold water after 23 years, but since you've gone to the zoning board anyhow, it, it might mean the difference between a significant variance request or a de minimis variance request. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next on the agenda is the final land development plan for Republic Bank, 2,300 Darby Road. Mr. D'Amico?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name again is Mark D'Amico, attorney for the applicant, Republic Bank. So if, just to refresh your recollection, we were before you on February 28th, and at that time, the planning commission recommended the, to the board of commissioners that it approved the plan as a preliminary and not a preliminary final plan, with the understanding that we would come back and try to revise the plan, in particular as it relates to sidewalks and grass strips and pier decorative fountain, just call it the decorative fence, per the suggestions in the comprehensive plan. So the plan before you is the plan that does all that. In the meantime, we did get a approval of the plan as a preliminary plan at Monday, last Monday's commissioners' meeting. So we went to the workshop meeting, there were no questions. We went to the commissioners' meeting, and it was approved as an agenda item without any discussion. So the plan, just to highlight the changes on the plan, there were 28 parking spaces in the plan that we first presented to you. That is now 22. So we've removed six spaces as a result of some of the changes that we've made. The impervious surface continues to go down. We're now at 80%. We were 85, and we're a little higher than that in the zoning hearing board, and I think we're starting with 98 or 99, but, so we're moving in the right direction there. The picket fence, one of the recommendations of the planning commission was to flip it, make it sure it was on the other side of the cube sign, and that has been done. And the sidewalk grass strip was a foot and a half. Planning commission had a strong recommendation to maximize that, and we were able to get that at four feet along both frontages. So we've got a four-foot grass strip and the four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk, and some of that resulted in the loss of parking spots, and I know that, you know, there's plenty of parking spaces or adequate parking spaces, and Republic Bank has, you know, reviewed all these changes with their architects, and they've all, you know, they've all been approved. Wasn't, wasn't necessarily easy, but we made clear that the planning commission's preferences were strong. So having said all that, Chuck Faulkner was kind enough to get us a review letter, and we've had an opportunity to review that. It's, there's not a whole lot to talk about, it's pretty much will comply and minor comments, but we're, if you want us to go through it item by item, Leon McGuire, Bob Blue's office is here, or if you just want to go through and tell us what you want us to talk about, we can do it that way. It's your pleasure.
Thanks, I, I don't see need to go through every comment, but there are some comments that I would like to have a little discussion on.
Sure.
We, we just received this letter this afternoon, like you did, I'm sure, so.
Yep.
I don't know if everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, but I'm going to ask you individually if there's any comments you would like to discuss specifically. And I'll start with, Bob says no? Am I putting you on the hot seat, Jerry? Jesse?
The street trees, should we talk about street trees a little?
Talk whatever about, whatever you want.
So we have some shade trees. They're not exactly, we have the quantity, I believe, but not the, not, they're not in the six-foot from the curb buffer line, right? They are, they're dispersed around the site? Minimum, right, minimum, okay, minimum distance, right?
Minimum. You need to flip to the landscape plan?
They're not, they're kind of, they have the quantity, but they are.
30 feet on center.
Right, they're not, yeah, they're like.
I think with the, with the grass strip and sidewalk being where they are and the, and the fencing, I think it would be, it'd be hard pressed to get the.
Right.
Trees in where they're supposed to go, I mean, not where they're supposed to go, where they're required by code.
Right.
And, and the applicant did indicate that they'd be willing to contribute a fee in lieu of whatever shade tree plantings they don't provide. Have we done that before? Okay, and where's that money go?
Into parks or whoever, other places that are needing those trees.
And how is that amount determined?
Sorry. Chuck, microphone before I get yelled at. I believe that if Arbiter or there's some sort of, they get the prices of the trees that they were looking for, that they would have used on this plan, itemize them, and they go into the Parks Recreation Fund.
Okay, so you would prepare a list of the required plantings by code, and subtract from that the plantings that you're putting on the site, and whatever the difference is, whatever the value of those plantings are, is what you would contribute. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding, yes.
And you still need to go to the.
Before, we were proposing three trees, but when we added the extra additional green space and reduced the amount of parking, we got it up to the required number of trees. We were not aware that these trees were not acceptable. And with that regard, if we're going to do a fee in lieu, do we still need to propose the trees we're proposing if they're not, if they're not, we're not getting credit for them, or are we?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, I think you're providing from the calculation the number of street trees, you're just not, they're not at the 30-foot-on-center, which I think maybe, as Angel was saying, maybe is fine, because, you know, would otherwise be a little tricky, so.
I understand.
No, I mean, I think
We try to fit them in where we could.
Right.
You know, where the site would allow. But it's, it's a small site, and with the four-foot grass strip and the sidewalk, everything's kind of, sort of squeezed together.
So suffice it to say, though, if we, if we are short trees, we're, we will make the contribution. We're not asking you to just get away with it.
Right.
Yeah, happy to do that.
No, I think they're, I think they're fine. I think it's obviously better to have more trees. I mean, and if it makes sense to not have, have them necessarily at the street where, you know, on the 30-foot-on-center, I think it's, I think it's fine, so. That was, did you have, do you want to shake the next one, and then I'll see if I think of any other
Yeah, all right.
That I wanted to do.
Um, not last time, but the time before last, when you were here, Mark, you indicated that you were doing the testing required to see if there's any contaminated soils or things like that on, on the property. Has that testing been completed? Do you have results?
Yes, the testing was done last year by a firm. I, I sent a copy of the report to the township and to the engineer. I also spoke with the landowner, who's living down in Florida. And what I've been told is that there was some contamination on the site to begin with. They did go through the remediation process, and they are basically mostly wrapped up at this point. I don't know that they're 100%, but they're very close to it. Currently, there are monitoring wells on the site, and there was a cleanup that already occurred, so.
Okay, so the, the owner is responsible to provide, providing you folks with a clean site?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that is our understanding. So there, there was an historical release, that's been remediated, and there's monitoring wells. There are obviously existing tanks that will need to be pulled prior to the closing. So the Republic Bank is not going to buy the site with the underground storage tanks in the ground.
Right, I understand that.
Well, they could have, but most, most buyers would not, so. And then, you know, when they pull the tanks, they could find another problem, but that, again, would be a, a problem the seller would have to deal with.
Okay. And if for some reason he doesn't deal with it, then Republic Bank wouldn't proceed with the project, or they could possibly decide to do the cleanup themselves.
Yes, right, yeah. We're not expecting, based on the phase one, and based on the investigation that Republic Bank has done, we're not anticipating a problem.
And as far as this stormwater management system is concerned, you've done all the infiltration testing and
Yes, we have.
You've found spots that where water will infiltrate properly?
Yes, we have. Where we're currently proposing the basin, there was roughly measured about an inch per acre of infiltration, or, excuse me, an inch per hour. And we used the safety factor of 0.5 when we did our volume analysis.
Okay, good. Last time, when your traffic engineer was here, we spoke about improvements on the Grace Chapel corner.
Yes.
And it was indicated, and it shows on your plan now, that you're proposing to put in a curb radius of 45 feet. Forty-five-foot radius, okay, which would improve the turning movement on that corner.
Yes.
And I forget what we were told, I thought there was an additional 40, 80 square feet of right-of-way that was required to make that improvement?
There is right-of-way that is required.
And that number was relatively small?
It is relatively small. Is it 60 feet or eight?
Nicole Kleinelsi, who's a traffic engineer, based on a concept plan that has been completed, the radius improvement requires about 80 square feet of right-of-way.
Eighty square feet?
Yep.
Okay. Have you done any type of analysis to indicate what type of improvement you could do with that corner without requiring any additional right-of-way?
There is no substantial improvement that can be done without requiring the right-of-way.
And, and I assume that right-of-way is more for the sidewalk and the traffic signals than it is for the curb itself?
It's really an adjustment to the curb and sidewalk only, so it is required to, to keep the curb within the right-of-way.
How, how far along are you with your revised traffic signal plans?
So we are in the process of working on a design submission to PennDOT. So we are in the, in the, in the weeds of that right now.
Okay, and do you have any idea where the controller is going to be located?
We don't at this point.
Okay, right now, it's on your corner.
It is, and we expect it will stay on that corner.
Okay.
Yes. So we don't expect any additional easements or things of that nature from other corners.
And, and Mark, as far as you know, no one has, certainly not you, but no one from the township has reached out to the church in regards to this modification?
To my knowledge, the answer is no, and my knowledge is based on a couple of conversations with Dave Pinone, as well as a conversation not more than two weeks ago with Commissioner McCloskey.
Can I piggyback on that? Would the, would the Ardmore Avenue Bridge close, closing, has any traffic impact from that been thought of in regards to this project?
No, there hasn't been a requirement of, to do any additional traffic evaluation for this site with regard to the bridge closing. I'm not sure how long that bridge closing is to be in place, but
Almost a year. Year.
So recently started, so it's going
No, it starts next week, I think.
Okay, and to be closed for a year. Obviously, this site doesn't generate much traffic. The bank will actually generate less traffic than what the gas station use is generating now, so I don't anticipate that there would be any concern with regard to that bridge closure specific to this site. May it change traffic patterns in the area a bit, certainly, but I don't believe that there would be any particular concern with regard to this site in particular.
I guess I was thinking more in terms of construction, like any disruption due to construction?
Sure, and the, the construction on this will be relatively minimal in terms of roadway itself. Again, as the plan has changed, and some of the previous anticipated roadway improvements have changed, that the disruption at this intersection will, will be minimal, but once we get to that construction phase, that is something that will be coordinated with the township and its engineer, so any concerns could be brought up at that time. But I expect disruptions here to be very minimal.
Okay, thank you.
The, the final comment I have is, refers to the, I guess, general comment number 13 in the letter.
Yes.
Okay. I thought we were clear in our request for the, for the streetlight this time. And also, there's some gaps in the decorative fencing that I think need to be closed up. Not a significant amount of additional fencing, but I think in order to make the project complete from compliance with the Eagle Road Design Standards, I think we need maybe another 45 or 50 feet of that decorative fence. And as far as the lights are concerned, I think, looking at the project that was done for YMCA, those light standards down there are roughly 80 to 90 feet apart. So I think a, a num, a four addition, four of those lights on this property would, would satisfy that requirement.
So I'll say this, we had a conversation outside before, before we were here, bringing, you know, talking about how this, you know, what the different issues are. So Leon McGuire was tasked with dealing with Interarc, which is the architect for the project, so they control everything. It's their luck, and they're very particular about things. So we, we got them to do everything with the picket, what you see on the plan is what they were willing to agree to at this point. So we can go back to them again, and we, we, we will. But there was concern that, you know, this is our lighting, and I recognize that the lighting's on site. I assume, Mr. Kapuzi, that you would be, that the location of those lights would be some, in the grass strip, is that what you're imagining?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
And I, I think they're in the grass strip behind the sidewalk, if I'm not mistaken. There's, yes, getting a nod over here from our township engineer. So they would be between the, either on the other side of the decorative fence, I don't think you have room, looks like the fence is right up against the edge of the sidewalk the way it is.
Right, pretty, looks pretty close.
They'd be right behind the fence. And I'm thinking a total of four would, would satisfy the design standard requirement.
Okay, well.
And, and they, if I may chime in, the design stand, oops, the design standard here is for that corridor, and that corridor sets the standard, not an architectural firm. So this is, in my opinion, not a condition, not a problem for Republic Bank. This is a problem with having a standard met that we have worked on for many years. So I would suggest that you are going to have a lot of opposition if you don't need it. End of story.
Look, understood. Again, we, we had the conversation with the architect, you're, they're not here tonight. You know, if that's part of your recommendation, then we'll, that'll be going to the commissioners, and we'll have to either comply or talk to commissioners out of it. So I, I understand your concern, again, you know, they felt that the, the property's adequately lit, and I know there's a decorative aspect, and it's not necessarily about lumens, but the, the property in the intersection is certainly very well lit, so. But again, I, I get your, I get it. I, I understand that that is likely to be part of your recommendation.
Okay, just, just for clarity, when I talked about the additional fencing, I want to
Yes.
identify where I think that's needed, okay?
Okay.
The first location is along Darby Road.
Yes.
From the end of the fence where it's shown on the plan, another 12 feet towards the driveway.
Yeah, so all, basically all the way up to the
Well, it's just about to that angle point in the sidewalk there.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay? And similar situation on Eagle Road.
Okay.
Another 12 feet from where it ends on Eagle Road to, you know, about where the driveway is.
Right, so
And then
within a couple feet of the curb cut there is what you're looking for.
And then on the other side of the Eagle Road driveway, I would like to see it run about 20 feet, so we get up to the property line, so that if and when the property next quarter ever gets redeveloped, we don't have a gap in the fence.
Well, there's, there's a driveway on that side.
Up to the property.
Yeah, right, okay.
I'm not worried about the other side. Not worried about Darby Road. And then the only other thing I would ask is that somewhere a note's added on the plan that if development ever occurs on the property to the west of the bank, what's that, Rindmore Trust?
Yes.
That, that developer be allowed to go in and modify that, that short piece of sidewalk so we have a straight run, we get rid of that little jog back into where the existing sidewalk is on the bank side, okay?
That's, yeah, that's, that's fair. That makes a lot of sense.
It, it looks like it's in the public right-of-way, but I just want to make sure that the bank doesn't object to that
Right, right, yeah, that's
That sidewalk is in the public right-of-way, because I moved the right-of-way line such that the sidewalk, for the most part, stays outside, inside the right-of-way, with the exception of what's happening up, up here at the entrance.
Okay, so there's additional right-of-way that's being dedicated?
Yeah, that, yes.
Yes.
To be clear, Mr. Kapuzi, it will be the right-of-way. Right now, it is not the right-of-way. Right now, the right-of-way is 25 feet off the property line, which is the center line of those two roads, and I don't know if that's actually, yes.
The existing right-of-way, you can see it, it's a gray line here, and it's a couple feet outside of where the proposed right-of-way is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like a lighter gray scale here on.
Gotcha. Who, who, is that right-of-way getting dedicated to? Does that go to PennDOT or the township?
That would have, those are state roads, so I think it would have
That is correct, it will go to PennDOT.
Okay, great. That's a project in itself.
Just sign their forms, there's hundreds of them with the, before you get your HOP.
Okay, Jesse, you've had a chance to
No, I, I didn't find anything else, and yeah, I, I agree, I think we need to do the full, the full standards, including the lighting. I fail to see how it has anything to do with the building. It, it's all about the site, it's about the entrance to the, this Eagle Road corridor, it has nothing to do with the, the bank building itself, and that's why we wanted the fence on the outside of the sign, so it, it, you know, I
I think the only concern was though that those are ornamental lights, and they would not be sufficient for the parking area, for our lighting standard, so in a sense, we're going to have bulbs now. If you looked at our lighting plan, you can see we had basically like three poles around the perimeter, we're basically cut off at the right-of-way for the most part, and now we're going to have a secondary light, which is going to basically get out of the tunnel, but it's going to be our channel, how to make that work, how to make those play together nicely.
I'm sure you can figure that out.
Well, I, me driving through to the meeting tonight, I noticed that for the most part, the buildings and other structures close to the street, or close to the sidewalk, all have the street lighting, but for the most part, like service stations and mini-marts did not, they just had, most part, what's there now, which is all these open, open-edged concrete, this is sort of unique.
That's what we're looking for, unique.
But you understand what I'm saying with having two light poles side by side, ones intense shining over the parking area, and ones just there. Somebody even asked the question on our side team, if you could possibly mount illumination for the parking area on the left or pole, just so that you didn't need two poles there. I don't believe that the illumination is sufficient on that pole for
I, I don't think those, those lights are meant to light the parking lot of the development. I think they're more for decorative appearance and also to light the sidewalk. So if you have some spillage from those that gets into the parking lot, I'm not looking for those lights to light the parking lot. But it's the, it's the feel and the look of the, of the corridor that we're interested in, okay?
Maybe it'll be possible to put something around the building, I don't know, I'll have to talk to the architect.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything? Mr. Faulkner?
No, I'm good.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? No, okay. Well, then, I assume you're looking for some type of action us tonight?
That would be greatly appreciated. We'd like to keep this project moving along and beautify that corner as quickly as we can.
Okay.
Not to mention opening up a bank branch.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend final land development approval for the Republic Bank project to the board of commissioners with the following conditions. Number one, that all the outstanding comments contained in the Pinone Review Letter dated April 11th, 2019 be addressed to dissatisfaction of the township. Number two, that Republic Bank shall be additionally responsible for the design permitting and construction of the proposed expanded 45-foot curb radius improvements at the southwest corner of the Darby and Eagle Roads intersection, namely the Grace Chapel corner, subject to the township obtaining the additional required right-of-way for that project. April 11th, 2019 be addressed to dissatisfaction of the township. Number two, that Republic Bank shall be additionally responsible for the design permitting and construction of the proposed expanded 45-foot curb radius improvements at the southwest corner of the Darby and Eagle Roads intersection, namely the Grace Chapel corner, subject to the township obtaining the additional required right of way for that project. And number three, a minimum of four light poles and fixtures meeting the requirements of the Eagle Road design standards shall be incorporated into the site plan. And finally, the decorative fencing and support piers shall be extended by an additional total length of approximately 45 feet to close the gaps in the fencing along Darby Road and Eagle Road. And I, I'm sorry, one, one more. A note be added to the plan indicating that at some future time, the sidewalk at the westerly end of Eagle Road may be adjusted by, in the event future development occurs on the property adjacent there, too.
I'll second that.
You have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Lisa, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Damon?
It's just a bit-
Okay. Mr. Fiera de Mondo?
Yes.
Mr. Point?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, our next item of business is proposed student rental at 510 College Avenue. I see Jamie John is here.
Yes. Good evening. Jamie John here on behalf of the applicants. We have filed a application to the zoning hearing board for special exception approval for a student home at that property. I have aerials.
Thank you.
The property is zoned R1, and there are six requirements that need to be met for a student home, and we will be complying with all of those requirements. The purpose for our attendance here tonight is for the planning commission to make a recommendation as to whether the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There is very little in the comprehensive plan that discusses this area. It basically just says that it's characterized by low-density, single-family development, and the future land use plan proposes no change from this pattern of development. And we are not proposing any development, and we are just proposing a use that's specifically permitted as a special exception in that district.
Is Bob any?
Can you tell me about what's, what's around the site? I mean, it looks like it's pretty extensively developed residential properties.
Correct.
And this, you're saying this would be a student housing?
Correct.
For student housing? Was it projected, how many students are going to be in there?
There are regulations that say you can't have more than three, so it'll be three students living in that home.
How big is the site?
Just a curiosity. I mean, the terms, is it an acre? Is it two acres? Is it half acre?
You know, I don't-
It's a minimum of one acre, because it's R1 zoning.
But it's an existing home, right?
It's, it's one and a half acres.
One and a half acres.
Right.
Uh, I, I do have some comments, but I'm anxious to hear what my colleagues have to say.
I'll, I'll start. So my understanding is this is a five-bedroom home?
Correct.
So how are you going to limit this to three students in a five-bedroom home?
There is a lease in place, and there would be a lease in place, and if there are more than that, then that would be a violation. I mean, I think that's just a general concern that you would have with any use, how you would make sure that it complies with the code. But the intent here is that it would only be inhabited by three students. And I, I think there are a lot of reasons why this student home will be, quote, "more protected" than another student home you would have in another area. As you can see, the site is very large. There's a lot of buffering there that will protect the adjacent neighbors. And actually, the owners of the property reside in the home immediately adjacent, so they do have some oversight of the use of that property.
Would there be anyone else living in the structure other than the students?
No.
I grew up in this neighborhood that you're talking about. And I live now in that area between, on Cooper Town Road. And I will be perfectly honest with you, this is, I lived on Millbrook Lane from 1950 until just four months ago. And as Haverford College had student housing, and as they have, from time to time, changed houses around, okay, there have been major problems. I don't care if it's three students, two students. I have an acre and a half property on Millbrook Lane still. I haven't sold yet. But when I've gone in my backyard and caught students from Haverford College back there, and knowing what the proclivities of young people can be, I personally find this to be, it's unbelievable. You're, you're talking about quite a distance from any college. So I just, I, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I just don't see it. This is a single-family neighborhood. It's not a dormitory neighborhood, and I just don't see it. I am sorry. I, I don't have an answer or otherwise, except to say I'll tell you that I'm really adamantly opposed to this.
Also, I'd love to meet the kids that can, the three kids that can split $5,300 rent, too. Sorry, I, I looked up the, the listing before the meeting. I paid $250 a month for rent in college.
Yeah. So, it's just, I just don't see it as working in the direction that the township wants that to go in. I, I, I cannot believe that we're actually, this is actually proposed. I'm sorry. It's my opinion.
I, I concur with your thoughts.
And when the comprehensive plan was approved in 1988, the recommendation was that the future land use in this neighborhood doesn't change, okay? The, the use as, or the proposed use for student homes didn't come into being until 1989, a year or two later, okay? How do you answer the question is, is, since the proposed use wasn't in existence back in 88, how can the, how can we say that the proposed use now is in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
I think the comprehensive plan just indicates that the area would be for low-density residential use, and my position is that a student home is a type of residential use. And again, it's a use that's specifically permitted in the code, and there are regulations that were built in to protect adjacent neighbors in terms of separation requirements, having to meet all of the yard requirements. And I do understand that there are always concerns related to student homes, but there is actually case law that says that basically a comprehensive plan is a guide, as a planning tool, and that that should not be the basis for denial of a special exception that's specifically permitted by a code provision.
Okay. I noticed that your clients live around the corner from this property?
Immediately adjacent, correct.
Immediately adjacent, okay. And the code does require, from a, from a special exception standpoint, there are requirements for buffering?
Correct.
Okay, and location of parking spaces, size of parking spaces, things like that?
Correct.
And, and you're aware of all those requirements?
We are, and we're in compliance with all of those requirements.
You are?
Correct.
So you, you, you're confident that, like, additional buffers don't have to be added, additional plannings don't have to be added to buffer the parking lot?
That is my understanding, correct.
When you go to the zoning board, will you be filing a, an actual plan showing how you intend to meet all the criteria required by the code?
We do have an aerial that basically dimensions the home as in relation to the setbacks or the, the property lot lines, and we greatly exceed all of the requirements for side yard, rear yard, front yard, actually almost double all of those requirements. So we're pretty confident that we can meet all of that. I mean, we don't have a survey, but I think the setbacks are so great here that we're pretty confident that even without that, it's, it's obvious.
Okay. I noticed it looks as though there's a pool in the property?
Correct.
And there are a couple outbuildings on the property?
Correct.
What are those outbuildings used for?
I believe one of them is a pool house. The other is some sort of a storage, correct. And just to let you know, the pool is closed, and it's not an open amenity for the tenants of the home.
Okay. And when, did you purchase this property specifically to rent it out, or how did you come into ownership?
And I have a little bit of-
I'm asking you when I'm looking at your-
Sure, and I have a little bit of history. They purchased it, and their daughter actually resided in that home. And she left a number of years ago, and since then, they have been sort of renting it as a single-family dwelling. I think the last tenant before the students were an employee of Merck, from someone from overseas, and he was residing there with his family. That family moved out, and then they had a request from a family friend as to whether their son could reside there, and that's sort of how the student home came about.
Okay, and is that their, your clients intend to rent to their family friend's son?
Correct.
And can you tell us where it goes to school, or?
Villanova.
Villanova.
And they have asked for a, a renewal for another year, and that's why they're here.
Okay. Are there any other student homes within 1,500 feet of this property that you're aware of?
No. I believe, we were provided a list of the student homes in the township by township staff, and there isn't. We meet the requirements. And obviously, here, there's a greater requirement for us just because of the width of the yard. I, I believe it's times 20, the required width of the yard.
Okay. All right. I, I tend to agree with you that the comprehensive plan is more a guide than it is law. And for whatever reason, the commissioners felt that there was a need to provide this type of use within the township, whether it was a curative amendment or, or some other action that they needed to take. It was obviously prior to 1989, that use wasn't, didn't exist in the then zoning ordinance, so they, they had to make that correction. And I believe the only residential district where you can put a student home is in the R1 district. It's not permitted in the R2, R9 district, at least through my research. Wait a minute, I'm getting waved here.
R1 provides, shows all the uses for residential districts through R6. So all those uses are followed through.
Not a special exception?
All, all uses.
Okay. All right. I didn't read it, but you know, you know better than me. Okay. So, that being said, I, I, I guess technically, my feeling is it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, but it does comply with the, with the zoning code, and that, that trumps the comprehensive plan, in my opinion. Okay? But I, I do have some concerns about how the property is used. The, the buffering in particular, and, and obviously you have to address that. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the buffer requirements. The parking has to be sized. It has to be nine by 18 parking spaces. They have to be striped. They have to have bumpers on them, so you don't roll into the grass, okay? And that's all in the code. I'm not-
And they actually have a two-car garage, and then they have a surface parking that can accommodate up to five cars.
And, and, and by code, you're required to provide a total of five parking spaces. Three plus two that normally require for a single-family use. I think that's the way the code reads.
That is not the way I read it, but I will take another look at it.
And I would like to not see any parking spaces forward of the building line. Not the, not the building setback line, but the actual wall line. Okay, so there's, that, and that house is set back at least 100 feet from the street.
Correct.
So that would mean that there's, the parking all occurs from the building back. The way, the way I read the ordinance, where I came up with the five parking spaces, a minimum of three paved, on-site, all-street parking spaces located to the side or rear of the premises, and not in the front yard, shall be required, in addition to those otherwise required for a single-family dwelling, which is two. That's how I came up with the five.
Understood. I'll take another look. Thank you.
And, and if indeed you need to add additional landscaping to meet the requirements of the buffer, okay?
Mm-hmm.
The buffer is supposed to be 20 feet wide, and I know there's a lot of vegetation out there, but in, in the event you need to add some additional buffering, I think that plan should, should go to the Shade Tree Commission for review and approval.
And if I may, what section are you getting the buffer requirement from?
The buffering?
Mm-hmm.
All right. 182 dash 718B1D. And 182 dash 718B2D, and David. And that section applies to-
Got it.
Parking spaces for condition, special exceptions in residential, okay?
Thank you.
So that, I'm having to say that all over again. That would be my recommendation for the zoning board. We, we recognize the fact that the, the condition, the special exception is it permitted use in the R1 district, and that all the applicable requirements in sections 182.7, 182.718, be adhered to. And that if additional plannings are required, that those, that plan be submitted to the Shade Tree Commission for review and approval. One other question. Have the neighbors in the area been notified yet about this special exception hearing?
Notice probably just went out at the earliest Wednesday, so they likely haven't received them yet.
Okay, all right. Have, has your client spoken to any of his neighbors about this? Or they don't, okay. You, you think, you know, okay, that's, that's what I would recommend.
I'm going to ask a question, Kelly. What will be the, where will the public meeting for this take place, and how will it take place since those notices are being sent out now? Is it for the-
It's for the zoning hearing board.
So it's the zoning hearing board, so they'll show up and-
Right, this, this was just to review for compliance with the comprehensive plan. Right. This was just to review for compliance with the comprehensive plan. The zoning hearing board is where, you know, the public will be invited to hear the case, make sure that all the items required for the special exception are met, any other opinions, et cetera, et cetera, just like any other zoning hearing board case would be.
Wow. I see. So looking for a little guidance here, and I apologize. Do we have any other?
This plan will not be coming back to the board, no. That's the question.
I just mean, all right.
This is a use by special exception, which is approved by the zoning hearing board? Or denied by the zoning hearing board?
And is there some possible way that we can tighten this up so that it'll never happen again?
Allows student rental?
Well, not, I don't know if it's allowing student, I guess I don't know how to answer that. I just thought single-family dwellings were single-family.
Any residents within the township can be rented by the homeowner. And our requirement for that is that no more than three unrelated people live in that house.
I see.
And that they share kitchen facilities and common areas, and live basically as a family unit. This is the same requirement for these people that happen to be students, plus additional items in order to maintain, an area that doesn't become like a sorority row type of situation.
Right. Okay, I understand then. And I probably overstepped earlier. I apologize. I will very reluctantly suggest that we follow Mr. Capuzzi's leadership in this situation, and I will I will second his proposal.
Any further discussion? Please call roll, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Furadamondo?
I'm going to say no.
Mr. Point?
No.
So that means the planning commission believes that the proposed use is not in compliance with the 1988 comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next item of business. Or another special exception. But I don't see anyone here.
Actually, I told the applicant that they, we usually do not have an applicant come for the comprehensive plan reviews. She actually asked to attend. But I can certainly answer any questions about, well, hopefully can answer some of the questions about...
Is this the old rug?
Yeah, Bengalian rug. On West Sister Pike.
Bengalian rug company on West Sister Pike?
Wasn't it the pub now?
It's next, next.
See, Google.
A very pretty, very empty building that's been there for, or was rehabbed a number, I think a number of years ago now, next to the parking lot that owned by CBS. Zone C3, which allows recreational uses by special exception. It was previously retail. And they are proposing a Brazilian jiu-jitsu studio.
I'll make a motion that planning commission agrees that the proposed use is in conformance with the 1988 comprehensive plan.
I'll second that.
Lisa, roll, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Furadamondo?
Yes.
Mr. Point?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes from our January meeting, we're going to postpone those for the next time. So I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So move?
I'll second the motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.